Good morning, everyone, and Happy New Year. I hope everybody had an opportunity to have a bit of a restful holiday. We were certainly hoping that 2021 would be a bit easier on all of us, but we have to wait a little bit longer for that to happen. But I first want to publicly thank all of you for the incredible work that you have done and continue to do under very challenging COVID conditions, among other things. I am very proud of the fact that you have never wavered from being public facing and doing what needs to get done for the people here in Darien. So, thank you all very, very much for that. And with that, we'll get started with our quarterly reports. I've had a request to allow Jim Cameron, TV 79, to go first, and then Lori Dunn from HR because of other schedule challenges. So, Jim, without further ado.
Jim, we can't hear you.
Thank you, Jamie. I appreciate you putting me up.
There you go.
Yeah, we got you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Excellent. Sorry about that. Thanks for moving me up in the schedule. I appreciate it. My report really highlights all of the last quarter for TV 79. Viewership continues to remain strong. Go to Meeting and Zoom and YouTube have really accelerated our coverage. Last week alone, we did 18 different meetings. And we are training some of our videographers who have remained idle over recent months to help facilitate Go to Meeting meetings. Cecil has trained them, so we're going to put them into the mix. Mike Wheeler, who is the TV 79 Advisory Board Chair, is working with the Rules Committee to develop a grid along with Kathleen on what meetings are coming up and who's going to be staffing them. So, happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you, Jim. Any board questions for Jim Cameron, TV 79?
No questions, Jim. Thank you so much for the work you are doing. And I really appreciate, as you do mention in your highlighted report regarding the 7-Eleven application. This is of interest to the community. And I thank you for taking that extra step to really highlight that for our residents. So, thank you.
It has certainly helped our viewership. So, thanks to all the land use groups that are meeting and talking about that. I actually went through and I guess I can confess to having scraped over 100 email addresses from Public Comment that was sent to P&amp;Z and added those people to our mailing list. They have not dropped out. They are definitely interested in the application. And we will continue to cover that as diligently as we have in the past.
Oh, my goodness, even an added effort. Thank you, Jim.
My pleasure.
Thank you. All right. Thanks for joining, Jeff.
Thank you. Have a great day.
All right. We'll move on to Lori Dunn, Human Resource.
Good morning, everyone. Been a busy quarter, as detailed in my quarterly report. I don't have anything new to add to the report, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to address those.
Questions for Lori. Okay. Seeing none, then thank you very much, Lori, for your... I know you've been busy. It's a very detailed report. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll go back to the top, then. The Assessor's Office, Tony Homicki.
Good morning, everyone. My report does speak for itself. We have been busy with building permits. Our year end is coming up by the end of January. I think the report speaks for itself. The only thing I'd like to add is that the state guidelines for income for senior citizens over the age of 55 will be taken applications between February and May. And I forgot to include the income caps, including Social Security. It's at $54,800. And for a single, it's for $46,600. We have about 95 people on the tax relief program. That's all I have to add to my report.
Tony, can you give us a glimpse of what we might be looking at in terms of grant lists this year?
Well, the permits have been active. I haven't reconciled. We've been doing a modified remote work in the last two weeks. So, we'll have bottom line figures to as early as the beginning of next week. Business personal property seems stable. I was a little concerned about so many businesses being closed and not buying assets, but I think we balanced out fairly well. The motor vehicle list also seems stable. A lot of people were not using their vehicles or buying new cars, but that changed over a little bit towards the end of the summer, carried over for the supplement list. And again, the building permits are very active. Jeremy keeps giving me a lot of swimming pools, so we're doing our best to get the grant list reconciled properly. So, I'll have actual figures for Jen in the Board of Finance, and Kate and all of you, obviously, at the end of the month.
Thank you, Tony. Board member questions for our tax assessor. Okay. Seeing none, then we will move on to buildings. Pete Solheim, busy quarter.
Okay. Good morning, everyone. As Tony said, construction has kicked back up. You can see by my report, it's been very active and commercial, and residential both have been more than back on track. And I perceive for the foreseeable future, it's staying that way. I'm presently reviewing Federal Second Building, which they call R1, which is a mixed-use building of commercial and two floors of residential above. I'm hoping to get that permit out by the end of this week, if not the beginning of next week. They're not quite ready for it yet, so we're ahead of the curve so far.
It's good news. Questions for Pete in the Building Department?
I just want to say I apologize to Pete for taking away such a rich fee on the school, $600,000 fee. Thank you very much, Pete.
You're very welcome.
Okay. Sarah, did you have a question?
No, I just wanted to say thank you for the detailed report. It's helpful to understand where we are in the different projects. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, Pete. We'll move on to Joe Larchewek, Post 53.
Hi, good morning. Happy New Year, everybody. I don't have anything new to add to the report. So, if you have any questions, be happy to answer them.
I did have one question, you know, looking at your comments about changes to your fundraising efforts, given the COVID environment. And I believe you did... You kicked off in November an annual appeal. Are you seeing good support for your fundraising, Joe?
Yes. And we are very grateful to the community who have really stepped up and helped support us. You know, we lost, obviously, the Food Fair, which is our sentinel event every year, and then all of the other fundraisers that helped. So, you know, a lot of our predicament was highlighted in our fundraising appeal, and the community has really stepped forward. We are very grateful.
Thank you. And I do want to say that Joe and the team at Post 53 have been incredible in being our first responders, going to those medical calls where COVID is present or the risk of COVID. And they've now... Some of them have now taken on the opportunity to be trained to administer vaccines. I don't know if you want to elaborate on that a little bit, Joe, but, you know, hoping that you and your folks can join the cadre of volunteers that will be helping to vaccinate our communities.
Sure, absolutely. So, back in December, the Commissioner of Public Health authorized emergency medical technicians and paramedics to administer the COVID-19 vaccine. So, we immediately started training those interested amongst our ranks and also the town paramedics have gone through the training. And currently, I have seven who have been signed off and ready to go, and that number will grow in the next week or so. So, we're ready to help in any way we can.
Wonderful. Thank you. David, did you have a question?
I was just going to ask if there's any way that we could help get the word out about the fundraising for Post 53, because I hate to say this out loud. Until I read this report, I had not heard about it. So, I don't know if other town residents have... Are a little more tuned in than I am. But I would definitely love to, if there's any way that we can help Post 53 raise the funds that they need, I would like to help with that.
Jody, do you have the information for your fundraiser up on your social media?
We do. It's up on the website, but I will make sure that the membership appeals letter and everything I can share with all of you. And then, please, feel free to send it far and wide.
Perfect. Thanks. Thanks, David.
Okay. Thanks.
Any questions for Joe Larchewek in Post 53? Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Joe. We'll move on to Emergency Management, Mark McEwen.
I don't see that Mark is here.
He's not here. He's on vacation.
Okay. Very good. Finance Department, Jen Chernesky.
Good morning. I have nothing to add to my report, but I do have one correction on page 11 in the financial update regarding contingency accounts. I incorrectly listed a pending transfer of $8,905 for the beach sifter as coming from contingency. That's actually going to be handled internally within Parks and Recreation. So, the available contingency is just under $230,000.
Thank you, Jen. I saw that in Parks' report. Okay. Any questions for Jen?
Yeah, Jamie, I just had one. Hi, Jen. Good morning. Could you just clarify when you're under your COVID section to clarify of the expenditures, reimbursements? Those reimbursements have been received or pending? Just wanted to clarify.
In some cases, they've been received. We have received our full municipal CRF, which was $40,000 towards the 2020 reimbursements and $162,000 for expenses since July 1st. We have received the local health grant. If you look on page... Let me see, four and five.
Okay.
Expenses. It'll say after each of the reimbursements whether it was received, just awarded, applied for, that kind of thing. Most of them we have received, but we do continue to get new funding streams that we will be applying for.
Okay. Fair enough. Thank you.
So, Jen, is it safe to say that we received our entire 2021 allocation? And any future expenses would be expensed against that allocation?
We have received everything that we know of at the moment for the care funds.
Okay. And, you know, I guess I would love to know from folks who are on this call if you anticipate any additional COVID-related expenditures. Obviously, we know things come up that you might not know today, but if you know of something that's coming up, I think the Board of Selectmen would like to be aware of that. Any other questions for Jen on the financials? Jen, we look forward to a smooth budget process with you and the Board of Finance.
We will do our best.
Yeah, great. Okay. Fire Marshal, Bob Bush.
Morning, all. I have nothing further to add to my report. I will happily answer any questions anybody may have.
My only one more of a comment than a question. I see that you weren't able to do your preschool programs, Bob. Is there any thought to maybe putting a virtual program together that can be disseminated to nursery school families?
We are looking into trying to figure out how to put some kind of virtual program together. Our preschool program is very much a hands-on program with the kids interacting and doing activities. So, it's just trying to figure out how we're going to manage to put that together and teach them what we teach them.
Okay. Any board questions for the Fire Marshal?
I just had one question about the false alarms. 70% are called malfunctions. Does that cover a number of sins, or is that... We have basically a lot of inept fire system alarms out there.
Malfunction due to... A lot of it is due to lack of maintenance on the system. It's not a bad system. It's either aging detectors or folks that aren't maintaining their system on an annual basis and having the company come out and clean the detectors out and everything that's needed to be done.
Okay. So, we don't have a bunch of bad systems installed in town?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Bob. David Knopf, with your permission, I'd like to have you go last as a segue into the Board of Selectmen meeting, if that's okay?
That's fine with me.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ally Ramstick, Human Service.
Good morning.
Morning.
I don't have anything further to add, so if there's any questions.
I do have a question, and I should be clear on this by now, but I'm not. The folks that are eligible and receive the Low Income Energy Assistance Program funding, can they also take advantage of Operation Fuel? Are they the same clients?
Yes, they can. Those who are eligible for state energy assistance are also eligible for Operation Fuel. So, if someone is getting assistance with their oil bill, they can then also get assistance with their electric bill. But it's not vice versa. So, not everyone who's eligible for Operation Fuel is eligible for energy assistance, because there's an asset limit for energy assistance.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And my only other comment is really more of a comment. I know that me and my board members will always be happy to help publicize and garner donations. So, I was sad when I read that there weren't enough turkeys at Thanksgiving. I know it sounds a little silly, but I really would hope that we could marshal all of us reaching out to our contacts to be able to fulfill any of those needs. So, please keep us in mind for anything that you want to publicize, send it to me and the Board of Selectmen, and we'll happily help.
I will. Thank you. In terms of the turkeys, just to clarify, so that was with person. The person didn't have ample amount, so we supplemented all of our clients with a grocery gift card.
Perfect. I bet we could have rambled up a bunch of turkeys, though, had we...
I know.
Okay. Thank you, Ally. Any more questions for Ally? And Ally, I want to thank you so much for partnering with the Department of Health on the vaccines for seniors. You know, I know it's a yeoman's job. I really appreciate your help with that.
I'm happy to do it. It was actually quite rewarding to be able to help schedule these seniors who are over 75 for the vaccines. So, I'm happy to have that opportunity.
Thanks. Questions for Ally? Yes, Sarah?
Just wanted to say thank you for all that you've done this past year. It's been a long year, and we thank you for everything that you've done for our residents. And also, I loved the postcard that went out.
Good.
With all the resources. I know that was a team effort, but it was fantastic. So, thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks very much. We'll move on to IT. I think George... George is on the...
Hey, good morning.
Hello, George.
Everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Hope everyone is well. I have nothing further to add if anybody has any questions.
We're very grateful for the updated wireless system in Town Hall. That's a huge improvement.
Yeah, I'm happy that worked out okay. It was pretty smooth and easy to install, so that worked out well.
That's great. And I see that there's good collaboration going on with some recommendations that have come from our IT assessment and your work with Kate. So, great news on coming up with a schedule for computer replacement and software upgrades.
Great. Thank you.
Any questions for George, IT? Okay. Then we will move on to Parks and Recreation, Pam Geary.
Good morning, everybody. I have nothing to add to my report, but if anybody has any questions, be happy to answer.
Questions for Pam?
I have a question. I'm talking... Looking at the agreement you made with the concessionaire, Uncle Stelly, the purchase of the old equipment for $10,000 or dollars. Have you had... Go look at that equipment. Do you understand what it is? I mean, you're not going to get a pick and a poke there, I hope.
Well, that's just a... That's his proposal. That's not an agreement that the town has made for him yet at all. Right now, I've had BTU Systems, which is a company that has been servicing our concession equipment for the last 10 years. They came out on Friday to assess both concessions to give me a better knowledge of what the equipment is worth. So, I haven't heard back from him yet, but I will be following up with him this week. And then, from there, we will then assess which pieces of equipment we would like to purchase from uncles and/or buy new.
Okay. I misunderstood it. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for that. I was unclear about that, too.
Jamie, I just had a...
Yes, go ahead, Sarah.
Sorry. Pam, I just wanted to ask, looking at the pickleball court donation, is that from one family or is that from multiple families, the donations?
That will be from multiple. The fundraising effort is starting, but certainly, we need a great... We need approval for many boards before that actually is confirmed.
Okay. Actually, still on that topic, Pam, will you be participating in our meeting, our Board of Selectmen meeting, when we talk about the gift?
Yes.
Because I can handle my question. Okay. I'll hold off. My question's regarding the pickleball.
Thank you.
And Pam, where did this school, did the swing set come from that's going to be installed at Baker Field?
Token Lake, I believe.
Thank you.
Pam, it's Dave Martin. The... I noticed in the budget highlights, there's $8,000 for maintenance. Is that the number that we've been spending regularly anyway? Or I guess where does that number come from?
It was just an educated guess in terms of two concession stands based on taking over the equipment. Certainly, we will get through this coming summer and have a better number for the following budget. But I thought it was a healthy number, $4,000 for each concession, seeing that before, we never had to maintain the equipment because it was somebody else's. It's just an educated guess.
Okay. Well, when the guy from BTU gets back to you with an estimated value for the equipment, it might be a thought to ask him if he has any rough guess as to what maintenance might be, because he'd be more familiar with it.
Exactly. I did talk to uncles, and he gave me an estimate of, say, five. But I may, depending on the age of the equipment. So, there's a lot of elements that I'm still, you know, getting, working through.
Yeah, we can talk about that more in our Board of Selectmen meeting.
Yeah. Sorry. I didn't mean to...
No worries at all, David. No worries. That's totally fine. Any other questions for Pam in Parks and Rec?
I would say thank you so much for the update on the basketball court. It is wonderful to see that in play.
You're welcome.
Yep. Okay. Thank you. We'll move on to Jeremy Ginsburg, Planning and Zoning.
I have nothing to add to my report. Happy to answer any questions you may have about the report.
I don't have any questions, but I do want to make a comment for the public. I think it's remarkable to see that Darien continues to open new businesses in the face of a very challenging small business economy right now. So, doing something right here in Darien. Only more good to come, which is fantastic. And Jeremy, thank you to your department for keeping pace of all this work.
Sure thing.
Any other questions for Jeremy on planning and zoning matters? I know you're super busy with 7-Eleven. We're all following that very carefully. Okay. Thanks very much. Move on to the Darien Police Department, Chief Anderson.
Good morning, everyone. I think you'll find our report fairly comprehensive. I just didn't want to mention that on behalf of everyone here at the Police Department, we fully embrace and are very thankful for the Board of Selectmen support of the Darien Police Department. On the national scene, you see there's a lot of... A lot of stuff going on across the country, and we are very heartened that we have continued to have the support of both our residents and the Board of Selectmen. One thing in the report, you see that we are at 51 sworn at full staff that will be dropping down in the quarter as Officer Carrie Perone will be retiring after 29 years of service. So, we are working to get a replacement for her in short order. There are several certified officers that may want to come work for the Darien Police Department. I think that's a testament to the operation that we run and overall, the operation that the town runs. If there's any questions for me, and I'm sure there are, I'm glad to answer them.
That's congratulations to Carrie and to thank her for her dedicated service to the town of Darien, certainly. I was surprised that there's nothing here about car burglaries in your report, but maybe you could take a moment as yet another public service announcement.
I was going to say the same thing.
You know, there... In talking with the chief, I would say that it's no longer just a pesky problem that we have. There's a serious criminal element now associated with these car burglaries that the chief can more well articulate than I can.
Thankfully, over the last couple of weeks, they have slowed down once again. But every time that I think that we've reached somewhere where we can be in a good spot, they come back again. Everyone's read what I put out, and in short order, probably this week or early next week, I would be putting out a public service announcement where you will see me and hear me talking about this very problem. We've been talking about it for quite some time, and it's not a stretch. And I want to reiterate with folks and our residents that these cars that are showing up with bullet holes in them or gunshots or bullets in them, it's not a far stretch to say that they didn't find the guns in the three hours after they stole the car. They were probably having guns when they came here to get the cars. So, we are actively working on it. In the legislative session that just opened this week, there are some bills that have been put forth by hopefully very reasonable people to address some of the shortcomings of how and why we can investigate these, how we can try to apprehend these people while they're doing it, and some repercussions for these juvenile or young people that are not in play right now. So, there are some moving parts in here that some legislators have seen the shortfalls of existing statute and existing regulation and are trying to address it. So, stand by. You'll be hearing from the chief this week, live and in color, early next week.
Don, can you share with us or with me the bills that you're aware of, and I'll distribute those to the board, so we all can read them? Very interested in that.
I will certainly do that. One is for repercussions after their third or fourth offense, that there has to be some ramifications. Right now, they're not. So, that's one bill. And the other bill will be that currently, the police cannot chase a stolen car under statute. It is a property crime, and a property crime only. So, that's looking to get dialed back as well. Not that we're going to go over hill and dale and chase people across the state for a stolen car, but we're largely handcuffed right now as far as trying to apprehend someone in a stolen car with no other underlying offense. Difficult for the police to do.
Thank you, Chief. Any other questions for Chief Anderson? Sarah?
Good morning. Thank you for everything that you're doing for our town. I just had a quick question. I see in the report that the traffic stops have increased. Is that due to an increase in traffic on Post Road or the schools are back in session? Any particular reason? I just was curious.
Well, a lot of that was COVID-related, right? Our motor vehicle enforcement has certainly had an uptick. It got to the point where it just wasn't being performed to the level that I was comfortable with, using proper precautions and things that motor vehicle enforcement stepped back up, and that was at my direction, so.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other questions for Chief Anderson? Yep.
I just saw in your report that you had six injuries in the last quarter. Any... Anything to know about that?
Five of those were COVID-related. As positive COVID cases, they get reported as injured on duty. They get sent off to Kirma, who's our insurance carrier, for review. Just because we carry them internally as internal injured on duty does not mean that ultimately, that's how they're decided to be. The other one, other than that, was a slip and fall here in the building on a wet staircase resulting in minor injury. So that was the six. Five of six were COVID-related.
Thank you.
Good stuff.
Speaking of buildings, can you give us an update? How are things at the police station?
Well, the DPW folks have been working with the electricians and our new contractor. They have gotten the majority of the bugs worked out in the HVAC system. And I'll be in full disclosure, this new company said to me they're not sure how the system was working, the way it was designed and installed. The wiring issues were very subpar. And I'm hearing things and air moving in the building here that I've never heard in 11 years. So we're heading toward a solution that I believe will be the final solution. As far as our septic and sewer problem, the DPW installed devices that we have not had a recurrence of that ongoing problem. So I think we're over the hump and I think we're heading toward the finish line. We're not talking about this anymore, thankfully.
That's good.
Fantastic.
That's good news. Thank you.
Any other questions for the chief? Thanks, chief. Moving on to Public Works. Ed Gentile.
Good morning. I have nothing to add and no updates to the reports that submitted and answer any questions that you may have.
I loved Darren's account of the red-tailed hawk intruder to the town hall auditorium. That was great.
Yeah, I do give Darren a lot of leeway in this report and he does a fantastic job in the creative licensing and drafting it up. I think he had a little fun with this and I think it's good. It's full of good detail, but then again, a little levity.
Yep, love it. I have a data question for you, Ed. In terms of the Q alerts, is it possible for us to see on a quarterly basis, you know, what the top three or the top five general issues are? You know, what are people communicating with you about? What issues need to be solved from DPW's perspective?
We can break that down. I can tell you this past quarter, if I said the word trees and limbs, I think that would cover a good percentage of that quarter because of the number of storms we had during the second quarter.
Thank you. My only other question is, do you know if the Committee on Sustainability is considering a program for home pickup of food scraps?
We are. We met last week. That was one of the topics among many. But that is trying to get vendors in here. With the additional towns in Fairfield County looking to do this program, I can just see that we're gonna get some vendors that come in here that are gonna be able to give our vendor and the only one around here some competition in doing some curbside pickup in lieu of just our station, transfer station pickups.
That's great. I know there's going to be a very big push in this legislative session for bills related to materials waste management. So we might see some good things come from that. Any other questions for Ed Gentile and DPW?
I have a question about the Darien Railroad Station. It says in the report something about the next stage is a 60% design review. Where does that all stand? And when we first looked at this budget, it seemed very, very, very inflated. Do we know where we're going with this?
We have a conference call in the middle of next week. I think it's the 26th or 27th, Kip, to go over the 60% drawings. I'm reviewing them right now. And it just so happens that First Select and myself are gonna look at some platform additions with regards to canopies or, I call them substations, if you will, or enclosed areas along them to make that recommendation as part of the 60%. So 60% drawing right now is they're just finalizing and getting through the weaves of all of the suggested updates, if you will, for the design. Looking forward to going from 60 to 90 and then final design documents will be next. But they're moving along pretty good, to be quite honest with you. And you are correct, that budget did look a little inflated. That will start to come down a little bit with some of the things that they're eliminating from the project.
30% soft causes, just way over the top. Thank you.
Ed, it's Sarah. I just wanted to say please pass on our thanks to your entire department. I know that we had a lot of storms and tree damage. Like you said, a lot of the Q alerts were relating to that. But it was a lot for the crews to pick up and I know it took quite a while to finish it, so thank you.
I'll pass that message on.
We know that your staff is, you know, still recovering from the loss of James Blankeny. And we extend our deepest condolences again on his passing. He will be missed. He was funny and fun and I know that it's very difficult on you and your staff.
Thank you. I'll pass that on to them.
Any other questions for Ed?
Just a comment back on the Darien renovation for the train station. As that moves along, I would just love to see that continue to come up on our Board of Selectment agendas, just for updates. I think it's of interest to the public. They, obviously Metro North did have a public session when this was presented and I'm sure that is still on Channel 79 somewhere. But I think it's of interest to the community, just so we stay updated on that.
Okay.
That's great. Yeah. Okay, thank you very much, Ed. We'll move on to registrar voters. Susan Gray. And I think, I'm not sure John is here today, but good morning, Susan. I think you're on mute.
Hi, sorry about that. Good morning, everyone. Unless you have any questions, I really don't have anything to add to this report about the last election.
No, I don't have any questions, but I know we have a special election coming up, correct?
Yes, we have a special election coming up. We received a writ of election from Governor Lamont on Friday and our election will be March 2nd, Tuesday, March 2nd. It only affects Districts 2 and 4. There are about 5,000 people. This is a seat that's being vacated by State Senator Carl Liam, who is going into the Lamont administration, I believe, in the Department of Transportation. So we're going to have an election on March 2nd and we're hoping to hold the whole thing here in town hall.
Great.
That's all I have to add.
Okay. We want to, I don't think that will interfere with any planned vaccine clinics as far as I know. I think you're on a Wednesday. Is that correct, David? Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Any other questions for Susan or the registrars? Thank you. It was a big, difficult year and you and your volunteers did a fantastic job. Thanks so much, Susan.
Thank you. And I just want to do a shout out for everyone who volunteered because other towns were struggling to get volunteers and Darien, we had a surplus. We had people calling and begging us to work in some capacity in the election and we had to turn them away.
Wow.
So that's sort of a testament to the spirit of the town and we were very, very touched.
That's great news. Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the Senior Center. Beth Paris.
Hello. Good morning, everybody. I don't have anything to add to my report specifically that relates to the Senior Center, but did want to say that we will be a third-party clinic on Tuesday starting January 26th, which David, I'm sure, will speak to for Darien seniors exclusively. So from 9:00 to 3:00, we're gonna just haul up the lunch program on Tuesdays because I think this is the priority at this point.
Thank you, Beth. Questions for Beth in the senior program? No? Okay, thanks so much, Beth. We appreciate your help and support with those vaccine clinics.
You're welcome.
All right. Kathy Larkins, Tax Collector. Kathy, are you there? We can't hear you. Are you on mute? I don't think you are.
Yeah, I'm here.
There we go. Good morning.
Hi. Good morning, everyone. The update I'd like to give to my report is an update on the applications for deferment, which is in compliance with the Governor's Executive Order 9R. We are up to 49 applications. Total number of dollars is just under $512,000. In terms of number of applications, it's two to one in terms of residential versus commercial. In terms of dollars, it's about 52% commercial versus 48% residential. So that's where we stand thus far on the deferment. And I want to make sure that it's clear to the public that you have to apply. This is not a carte blanche. You get to defer your taxes until April 1st. You have to apply and have your application approved. The application is on the Tax Collector's webpage. So if there's any questions, make sure you call the tax office. But I don't want people come, you know, February 1st complaining that they thought that they automatically got to wait until April 1st because they don't, they have to apply for it. The other thing is, in the tax office, we merged both our taxes and our sewer billings onto one payment link and that payment link is provided by Point and Pay and there are now reduced fees. Those fees are highlighted on the Tax Collector's webpage as well as when you go to make a payment, at the top of the terms, it has all those fees highlighted. And lastly, the tax payment history for tax payments made in calendar year 2020 are now available on the website and that's useful when people are filing their federal and state income taxes. And then if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Kathy. Any board questions for Kathy, Tax Collector?
Yeah. Just a question I had on the fees. So that it would appear that the debit card or ACH payment, being such a low fee is a very efficient way for taxpayers to pay their bills?
Yeah. It is. And I am seeing an uptick in the number of payments made online. I think so far this year, we're up $3 million, which is pretty significant.
Right. Well, paying a fee of 3% on a $10,000 bill is pretty big, but paying only a fee of $3.50 would make a lot of sense. Okay.
Yeah.
Kathy, could I just ask that midweek next week, your department put out another press release noting the last day to apply for the tax deferral, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Any other questions for Kathy?
Yes, one, going back on the fees, were there any other repercussions of switching from Webster Bank to Point and Pay? Or these were just the benefits?
It was all benefits. The fees are less for the taxpayer. The money is available to the town a lot faster. I'm not having to park money in a different bank to offset, for earnings credits to offset fees. It's just made things much more simple, fewer bank accounts. It was all upside.
Fantastic. That's great. Thank you.
Hey Kathy, it's Dave Martin. Given the benefits to the town of having people pay online, is there anything that we can do to sort of stimulate that for people who might normally pay by check or some other mechanism to improve, you know, the time of availability and everything like that for the town?
I think it's just a matter of getting the word out there. It's truly the only other thing that can be done.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much, Kathy. Okay, Town Clerk's Office. Kate, is there anyone here from the Town Clerk's Office? No? Okay, so we have a report from Lisa Buxton and if you have any questions about that, please funnel them through me and Kate. Town Treasurer, Joan Hendrickson. Good morning.
Yes, I... Hello?
Yes, good morning, Joan.
The only update I have is on January 13th, I sent Jamie the December numbers. So we are currently in the general fund at $89,820.89. We are at $95,871.32 for the total town fund. And you each have a copy of the individual investments in the portfolio. So if you have any questions, let me know.
Questions for Treasurer? Okay, Joan, thank you very much. Appreciate you keeping us updated.
Thank you.
Okay, then we will move on to Youth Commission.
Morning, Alicia. Just two comments. First of all, I'd like to publicly thank Kip Coons for allowing us to use the parking lot across from Tilly Pond Park for our immensely successful food drive and publicly asking if we can use it again in March or April. It was so great. We're gonna, we have it on the schedule to run another food drive. And then I had suggested that you check the website for a video that our youth member Courtney Ball had created. Unfortunately, she used music that we hadn't licensed, so it's not for public viewing yet. She worked so hard on this video and as soon as we have it in public viewing format, I'll let you know. So that's it. I'm happy to take any questions that you might have.
Questions for Alicia? No, thank you, Alicia. I know it's been a challenging time to stay engaged with programming and you've done a great job, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, since we are going to have David join us for our next meeting, I'll ask him right now, David, is there anything that you'd like to share from your quarterly report with us right now? Otherwise, we will adjourn to our Board of Selectment meeting.
There is. You see, behind me is a box that contains vaccine delivered this morning.
Great. That's great.
Anticipating our first clinic tomorrow. And I also want to thank Ally. All the department heads have been fantastic to work with, but in particular, I had, you know, I want to say thank you to Ally, who worked so hard over the weekend to schedule the seniors over 75 because the online registration process for getting vaccine is just very, very complicated. And we chose to do the phone call and personal registration for our seniors. And I want to thank Ally for the work that she did to make sure that that happened. I believe we're full. I believe we booked all these slots we had for tomorrow. And thank you, Beth, for next week. Thank you, Ed, for the work you've done down at the testing location. Pam, for the use of the gym. Staff in the Selectments Office. Police Department for monitoring the restaurants. Mark, the work he's done with the, getting the rosters together for people that need to get vaccinated once we can for Fire Department. It's been a wonderful period of time. I have to say good things in this tough time because everybody's been great to work with and with that. Thank you. That's it for my update to my report.
Thanks, David. If you could just tell us, how many doses did you receive this morning and which vaccine did you receive?
We were, I was notified on Friday that we would get 400 doses. I ordered six. The previous round, when I ordered, we were denied. They didn't have enough even to send us. So 400 doses. And so, you know, we're off to the races starting tomorrow.
And it's the Moderna vaccine?
It is because we don't have the capabilities of sub-zero freezing that the Pfizer vaccine needs. So this came in. We're gonna put it right in the fridge and it'll be thawed and ready to go tomorrow.
David, does 400 doses mean 400 people or 200 people?
400. We're not saving any.
So you have enough to give two shots to 400 people?
We're, that's the plan, you know. So we have enough right now to give 400 shots to 400 people. And the idea is, is that when it's time for that, it's, this particular vaccine is 28 days for the second dose that will have adequate vaccine at that time. That's the promise from above.
So just to add a little bit more detail on that, on last week's statewide call with Acting Health Commissioner Deirdre Gipper, they have a process in place that when the state dispenses vaccine, like the 400 first doses to the town of Darien, there is another 400 doses that are reserved at the manufacturer. 400 doses that are reserved at the manufacturer, because there's great concern that there might not be enough dosing for the second dose. But she gave me some comfort that that is in fact not the case, that for every first dose that's given, there's a second dose that's reserved. Okay, yes, Krista?
David, still on this vaccine, could you just update again? Who has been vaccinated with the community? Who are you targeting? Can you talk briefly about that?
Yeah, until actually yesterday, or at the end of last week, there was class one, Phase 1A, which is the healthcare providers, emergency responders, who would be directly involved with providing first response in health. And also, the residents of nursing homes and extended care facilities. That was Phase 1A. At the end of last week, it was expanded to, if you had availability and some vaccine, to over 75-year-olds, because that is the most vulnerable population. There was some confusion in the messaging from the State Health Department, I believe, on the website, which said that it was open to all Phase 1B, which would include essential workers, teachers, and a whole host of other folks. But there's not enough vaccine for that, and the state has made it clear, and even on this morning webinar with the State Department of Education, they're asking anybody who is not over 75 and has been scheduled to get a vaccine to cancel their appointments, so that all vaccine can be administered to the over 75 group. So right now, Phase 1B is going to itself be phased in, with the promise from the state that there will be clarification as to who will be next after the 75-year-olds. It's even 74, or 65 and above, not yet, and those with health concerns, not yet. So right now, it's just 75 and above, and the Phase 1A. I believe our police department's been fully vaccinated, Post has been vaccinated, anybody who wanted it, and our local healthcare providers have received vaccine as well.
Okay, so can you clarify then, where are we? Is that where we're starting tomorrow, with our 75 and over residents?
Yes, exclusively that group.
Okay.
In accordance with the directive from the state, yes.
And no appointments are being taken for 1B yet?
We can't, because there's no way to screen for that. So one of the advantages we had with doing calls, because we actually assign people times, it's all by appointments, not walk-in, so people have been assigned times to come in for their vaccine.
So just to clarify, Krista, the 75 and over is the beginning of Phase 1B?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought that was still 1A, okay.
It's 1B, and it, and 1B will be tiered, as David said. Likely, it will be 75 and over, and then 65 and over, with the idea that with every new tier, they're hoping to prioritize folks that are the most vulnerable. So, you know, I, it's a, it's a difficult job and big decisions to be made, but they are trying to make sure that it's really less about the sector of the population than it is about the populations that are the most vulnerable. And I think they're, they're doing a pretty good job with that so far.
That's 65 with the comorbidity, as I...
It's, no, it's 75 and over, then 75 to 64, and then 16 to 64 with a comorbidity. And, you know, I've been in contact with David. We don't really know what that list of comorbidities is at this point in time, or even how that would be adjudicated.
Okay, right, that's true. And this will all be then, I understand that the phone calls were being made in conjunction with Ally's work and at the senior center. Is there more of an outreach plan for the rest of the population, and that 65 and older who may not be using the services to the same extent? How are we going to reach that, our residents of 65 and over?
I think our primary plan is, not only is there statewide notification being given, but for, say, for example, teachers, that's, that's a group we have a roster, and that roster will be submitted, and they will be contacted directly by the CDC website VAMs to schedule their appointment by themselves, same as our town hall employees, which, it's, it's an open registration process. So that information is readily available. We'll also be publicizing it through the Code Red announcements, and on our website, and through the media, and any other methods that anybody can think of. But the, the good thing about this CDC system, as I said, it's a, it's, it's an email notification system that works well for those of us who are, you know, proficient with emails. But the problem with this over 75 group is, is that a lot of folks don't have that proficiency, and they rely on others to do that work. So that's why we chose the personal approach.
Yeah, that's great. No, that is wonderful. And so we will be vaccinating teachers who are employed by the district?
Well, it's...
Or do they fall into the residency?
No, you can, it's an open vaccination. Once, once there's enough vaccine to go around, people can register to get vaccinated anywhere that's most convenient to them. If it's most convenient here, I mean, we've talked about having, you know, clinics closed and just open to teachers here, but there's been some question and concern about the disruption that that would cause at the schools. If people have a reaction to the vaccine, would you have, you know, a bunch of teachers being out at the same time if they have a problem with the vaccine? Because some people do have some reactions. So, you know, we're still in the kind of learning stages for that, and I'm not sure how far off we are from being able to offer widespread vaccine to, to the teachers at this point.
Okay. David, maybe you could also address, because of the people on this call, what you know about critical workforce, who will be included in that, and if our municipal town hall employees will be included in that?
Yeah, I wish I had some concrete answers about how far that goes, but there's an advisory group that's working on who would be in the priority list and who that would constitute. I mean, in my estimation, I would think our Public Works Department would be pretty, pretty high up there. They need our roads, we need to have the roads plowed, we need them working. But food service workers, obviously, that's critical. And, you know, there, there's just, I, what did, I think the last figure was that now with the expanded 1B, it's well over a million people. So to have a prioritization of that group, that's what the Allocation Committee and the Governor's Office and DPH are working on right now. Hopefully, we're told by the end of the week, we'll have some kind of list, priority list, on who's next, and how it's going to be done. It does make it difficult for all of us, because there are a lot, there's a lot of folks who want vaccine. And everybody has a story.
Great, thank you. And we can continue this discussion in the Board of Selectment meeting, but thank you for all of that good information, David. Does anyone have any other questions or comments for the quarterly department heads? If not, then have a wonderful day, everyone. And Board of Selectmen, if you'll just hang on to this meeting, we will let everybody drop off, and then we'll start our Board of Selectment meeting. Okay. I'm going to assume that everybody who is still here still wants to be here for the regular Board of Selectmen meeting. So I'd like to call to order this regular Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, January 19th, 2021. First order of business is to receive a presentation from our Health Director, David Knopf, on COVID reporting methodology, and, and any other questions that Board of Selectmen members will have for you this morning about pandemic, data, communications, vaccine. There's a lot to share. So without further ado, David, I'll turn it to you.
Morning, all. Yeah, data. We're being overwhelmed with data. We're now over 900 cases since this began. And I hope that folks have been, and I know, based on some information and feedback, I've gotten emails, that everybody's looking at our weekly reports, and you can see what, what's been happening and what the trends are. Obviously, the case counts, numbers have gone up in, since basically Halloween, and also testing has gone up. So we are seeing an awful lot of testing. The location down at the Leroy West parking lot is constant, constant flow of traffic in and out of there. It's been a, it's been a great service to the community. I am very pleased to be able to offer the vaccine finally. As I said, it hasn't been easy getting approved to be a vaccine dispenser, because in part, we've never been part of the state system for even the seasonal vaccine. We bought our vaccine independently. So in order to become recipients of this COVID vaccine, we had to sign on and get approved to be a state-licensed dispensary, in essence, which meant we needed to have different equipment and have it approved and vetted by the State Health Department. It's part of the reason why we didn't want to go through state to begin with, because it's just that extra reporting responsibility that we felt that we were better, we're serving the community well, and we didn't need to be part of the state system, so we weren't. But we finally got approved, and as I said, our first order for vaccine was not, they didn't process it, they said they didn't have enough to send to us. And then we're getting our 400 doses that we'll be dispensing within the next two to three clinics. Our plan for clinics is Wednesdays for the foreseeable future in the gym, Tuesdays to get our senior population done in, in the Mather Center. And then we're going to expand to Thursdays also in the gym, when it's time to start issuing the second doses, because, well, I think that we should be getting more vaccine at that time. There'll be more people signing up, and we do have to get people their second doses. It's twice as much work. And then there's also the possibility of offering, depending on demand, all-day clinic on Saturdays also in the gym, which would be done through a strike team that's organized by our Emergency Preparatist Regional Coordinator, Nick Jossup. So I think we'll be able to offer quite a bit of vaccine to residents. I know there's other concerns in adjacent towns, they're putting up enormous, offering enormous amounts of vaccine. Not sure how they're getting it all. It seems like numbers don't add up to me, but if, if it's there, it's great, you know? And as I said before, when you're notified that you could sign up, and when you sign up to the VAM system, you can get vaccine anywhere. It's not determined by where you live, it's not determined, it's, it's just based on what's most convenient, and even to what, some degree, what's available, timing-wise. So with that, I'll take any questions that you, that you may have.
David, can you talk a little bit just about the, still of the cases of the testing and the positive results? How's that communication going with the state? And as then it gets reported onto our website?
Well, every, every day, we go to the, there's, there's actually two reporting sites that the state maintains. One is the Contact CT, and then the other is the CTEds, which is the Syndromic Surveillance System, which is where I get the data that I use to publish our daily reports and our, and where our weekly reports is derived from. The Contact CT system is where our contact tracing is done. That's where our interviews are performed from that. And the two systems don't really communicate with each other, and they don't have same-case numbers, so it's a little disjointed at times. But we've been fortunate with our, in particular, our nurse Cindy Rogers, who's been able to kind of navigate between the two and do an effective job of interviewing. But what you see from our daily reports and the weekly reports is the information that is sifted, and I do mean sifted, through the CTEds system. The reporting system is kind of tough to work with. It's got a lot of data in it, and what they do right now is they have a segment that's called Most Recent Entries, and the entry could be that negative test is reported. Now, they're recording negative tests there. So in order, so for example, for today's report, I will go back two days and look at today's data, and then tomorrow's data, because the system is set up that if I don't put tomorrow's data in, I won't see today's. It's not as to why, but that's the way it works. And so, so then we have to filter through the entries that are negative tests to see which is the positive. So yesterday's results through the weekend, there were 150 results, a lot, most of them were negative tests that we sifted through to come up with the 30 or so, 28 or so positive cases. So it's a very labor-intensive process.
It's a shame, yeah, no, it's, doesn't like, it sounds like it doesn't make your life very easy that you have to sift through results, that you could just not see the positive pop up?
We've asked for that, you know, what, you know, simply, just tell us when the most recent positive laboratory test is. Sounds easy.
Right.
The system's not set up to capture laboratory data. Just as simple as that, it wasn't set up that way.
Okay. And then, I'm sorry, Sarah?
No, 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 Krista, finish, go ahead. Okay. David, just out of curiosity, I know it's very difficult, because someone who gets a positive test, then sometimes goes and gets a negative test, and then, you know, a week later goes and gets retested and sees a negative test. How do you confirm if someone is really positive, if there's like two negatives and one positive, or two positives, one negative? It's gotta be difficult.
Let me see if I can answer that clearly. It's basically, if they're asymptomatic, we ask people to get a, if they want to say they're negative, and they've had a positive test, particularly a positive antigen test, to get a no from the doctor. And so, say, for example, if it's a school, school-aged child, between a, a letter from the doctor, asymptomatic, no exposures, there's a whole bunch of things that have to, we have to go through, because the, the opinion of DPH has always been, if they're positive, if you get a positive test, consider it to be a positive case.
Right.
So you're erring on the side of caution, so it's pretty hard to get out of, if you've been declared to be positive, it's kind of hard to get that kind of overturned, as it were.
My second question is, you have, thank you very much for detailing how your staff is spending their hours. I see that you have one of the part-time nurses focusing on the contact tracing. Do you have enough staff to do? Do you need more? I know the schools are doing, you know, there's so much going on with the school system, they're trying to stay open. Do you have enough staff? Do you need more staff?
I need an admin. Our admin is out on maternity leave.
Okay.
We just cannot keep up with the phone call volume we have, the concern of the public. If, if there's anything that we need, if we need some presence here at the office continuously, because, you know, right now, we're, we have to take the phone calls directly. I answer the phone, you know, and, you know, and we process, you know, requests, as Peters and has said, you know, busy business, building-wise, we're busy, which means, you know, we do septic work. We do, we have the responsibilities of the Health Department on a regular basis that we still have to do. And, you know, a lot of that work can be done by the admin, but it's by our staff, too, and we just, you know, we just can't do all of that. So I think that's the primary, you know, we've been very, very fortunate that the folks who are working are working, you know, at 200%. I'm, I'm so thankful for the group we have, but we do need an admin.
Sarah, since the beginning of the pandemic, David has been given permission to hire whatever staff is required for him to do the job that he needs to do.
Awesome, yeah.
You know, we, we talk all the time.
Yeah.
And staff does come and go for a variety of reasons, you know, whether it's a quarantine or maternity leave, but, but David... But but David knows that he has the support of of us to procure whatever personnel he needs.
Of course, of course. David, your your comments brought up an interesting question about the vaccines. Do you foresee people coming in for the COVID vaccine and asking them for the flu vaccine? I know it's an impossible task to think of right now to administer both. Do you foresee at some point next winter being able to administer, let's say, a different COVID vaccine or the flu vaccine? Or do you want, want to just look at this kind of particular time period as a one off?
Well, I I think most of us in public health are hoping that next year's flu, seasonal flu vaccine will include a component specifically for the COVID. You know, I don't, I don't think that that's an impossible thought, that there wouldn't necessarily be a reason to do two different rounds of vaccine. But we did that this year, you know, we've we've had our flu, our seasonal flu shots. We still have some. So if people want seasonal flu shot, we'll still give it. So we still have the ability to offer some. So we still have some in reserve. But, you know, that's our role, you know, and if next year there are two different vaccines, then, you know, I think that what's going to happen next year, though, is is that the providers, doctors and doctors offices and clinics will have a lot more vaccines. So they'll be able to take care of their patients on a more regular basis. Typically, our role, even in seasonal vaccine, is I feel that we more fill the gap, you know, than than our primary providers for that. And, you know, I see us next year resuming that responsibility, even in the case of issuing COVID, if we're still in, still issuing COVID vaccine. We can do both.
David, have you been given any medical instruction about whether you should be administering a flu vaccine and a COVID vaccine at the same time?
Well, we won't offer them at the same time. And the answer to your question is no. I don't recall any directive on that, but we wouldn't do that at the same time. So if somebody comes in and say, oh, by the way, I'm going to get the COVID shot and can I have my seasonal flu shot? Our advice would be come back a different day and, you know, make a separate appointment. We're not going to have the seasonal flu vaccine with us at any of the clinics that we're offering the COVID vaccine.
My other, my other question of concern, and you and I have spoken back and forth a little bit over the last few days, is there's really no messaging coming from the state of Connecticut that you should counsel with your primary care physician to determine if the COVID vaccine is right for you. I've tried to put that in all of my code red messaging because it concerns me that that, you know, folks are so eager to get vaccinated. But I worry that they're not seeking the advice of their doctor before doing so. So when you have these vaccine clinics, will you be asking folks if they've spoken to their doctor about it? Or is that not a concern of public health officials at the state DPH?
There's a questionnaire that every person, we have, our nurses go through a questionnaire with everybody who comes in to be vaccinated. And it has, it asks whether there's been any response to ever have, you know, any past vaccine or medication, if there's any allergies. You know, do you get flu vaccine on a regular basis? And have you spoken with your your physician? And, you know, it's a, it's a, there is a questionnaire. We're not looking for doctors sign off, issue vaccine. So, but we do go through a series of questions for anybody who's going to be vaccinated.
Okay. I, you know, I have a lot of questions of liability in my mind after reading some concerning articles about a dose of vaccine in California where there were a number of allergic reactions and other reports. So it's it's an area of concern for me that I hope maybe you can continue to ask questions of the state DPH.
Right. As you know, I did request an opinion from the epidemiologist about any negative outcomes from the vaccine and have not heard that.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Krista. Switching gears a little bit, there's been a lot of interest in the community regarding school status as it relates to COVID. The superintendent, Dr. Adley, has referenced conversations, meetings with you and his communication to parents in helping to inform his decision. Can you talk a little bit, David, as to your role in that and what you're thinking about two parts? One, the presence of students full time in school versus remote versus a hybrid? And secondly, do you have an opinion regarding the quarantine policy and practice? In the gentle to that?
Okay, I'll talk about quarantine first because we have not seen people develop illness who've been quarantined. The numbers of cases for all the kids who've been quarantined because of exposure has not really shown that there's a great likelihood of coin of infection.
No, that's good.
So when the CDC recommended the option of reducing quarantine time to 14 days, now that they're still recommending 14 days, but they provided the option to school systems to choose to reduce the quarantine period to 10 days. Based on the information that we have locally and actually even through the throughout the state, we could see no reason to continue requiring a 14 day quarantine period for everyone. It just didn't seem to make sense. Obviously, they still have to monitor themselves. And if they show any kinds of illness, they have to stay out. But so, you know, so we agreed to and we had discussions with Dr. Adley, with Dr. Kenefek, who's the medical advisor both for the school system and for us now, and also director of nursing. And we came to that agreement, not allowing for the test out option to seven days because that's just too complicated to administer. So, yeah, we've reduced the required quarantine period in schools to 10 days based on data. As far as different types of learning modalities and the decision making process, again, we're looking at where is, where's spread occurring? And is spread occurring when schools in session? Is spread occurring elsewhere? And what we found, and I think what our data even show on the weekly results, is that spread is occurring at home and spread is occurring within families, not occurring in school. We're not seeing, you know, if one kid in the second grade is sick, that the that the whole classroom ends up being quarantined. We're not seeing that.
You mean sick, as opposed?
Yes, I'm sorry. So to be clear, we're not seeing transmission of illness in school. We're seeing transmission of illness elsewhere and associated with other activities. So, you know, but, you know, the concern with schools is making sure that there's enough staff available to teach, to classes, and, you know, protecting, protecting the teachers, obviously protecting the students. The ultimate decision is Dr. Adley's, you know, as far as what happens with the schools. You know, we can talk to him about what the data show. But it's it's been his decision based on the information that we as a group present to him.
Okay. No, clearly, it is Dr. Adley's decision alone in this, but I appreciate your insight and your feedback and perspective on it. But could you circle back for a moment when you mentioned the seven day option with the testing? That it was too difficult to, or too complicated, I'm sorry, to administer? Could you elaborate on that?
Well, simple is always better, especially when you're dealing with large groups of people. And so if you have a seven day option for some and a 10 day option for others and a 14 day option for somebody else, somebody has to review the information on testing because testing is the way out. And testing has been shown, as you asked the question earlier, sometimes you get a net false negative, sometimes you get a false positive, you know, so that kind of muddies the water and it makes the decision making process more difficult. And then there's the timing of when was the test done? Was it done at the appropriate time? It's difficult enough to address the issues that come up on a daily basis without having to filter through that too. And all you're gaining is maybe two days. So at that point, our feeling was, let's just stick it, stick to the 10 day number of days, not having to review any kind of testing documents. It just made it too complicated for all of us.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you very much. I appreciate the elaboration on your part in this process.
You're welcome.
Sarah. Couple of questions. I understand that you've been involved in those conversations with Dr. Adley, and I know our job is not to second guess him. I know over Christmas, you know, you were involved in conversations and I'm so grateful that everyone is kind of working together. One of the things that seems to be complicated, and we talked about this last week with Jamie, you know, we get reports and, you know, just yesterday you will say you'll get tests that are, you know, positive and then the original date of the test is December 16th. How do you account for all of that data? Like, where are those tests coming in that are monthly?
We're not seeing that kind of lag anymore.
Okay.
Most tests are, you know, within three days at most. You know, we're really not seeing that kind of a delay anymore.
Okay.
That was, there was a, there was a, I think two weeks ago or so, there was a real problem with a data dump that has had some results that were from a month ago. But we've worked through that and resolved that. And that was, that was a reporting glitch.
Got it.
With the state.
So it shouldn't, yeah.
Sorry, it happens on a one off basis. You'll see, you know, we had some oddities. And that's why we started reporting the cases and the testing period from which those cases have been reported, especially after the weekend because our last report happens on a Thursday. So then we've got Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and sometimes Monday tests to report on a Monday. I did note in the governor's data release yesterday that there was an additional almost 300,000 negative test results. For some reason that had not been in the state data that were added to the state data, which is good news because it dramatically reduced the positivity rate for the state of Connecticut. I think it went from over 6% to now, you know, about 4.8%. So, you know, it's a very difficult data mining and aggregating situation at the state. So, you know, I think, I think David and his staff are doing the very best they can with the data tools that are available to them from state DPH. And we're small enough, I don't know how the cities do it. We're actually small enough that the nurses can scrub the data, you know, go through and look at those cases and find the ones that, oh, they're not a Darien resident or it was reported twice or something like that. So we're really very fortunate.
I agree. David, if you have an individual who, let's say, an adult, no children, who has maybe traveled, you know, to Arizona, I'm just picking, to see family over holiday break and they've come back and they've tested positive, can they use that seven day period if they, within that seven days, receive a negative test? How is that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it is the school policy for the testing, test out. It was, it's not, it's accepted in Connecticut.
I'm sorry, did you say school or tool policy? I just wanted to.
I'm sorry. It is the school's policy not to accept the seven day test out option. But it's across the state, it's acceptable to use the seven day. It's, that's on the state website for travel.
Got it. Okay.
The key, though, and important to remember, is that if you're going to use the test out option for travel, you can't get the test and have it have it count before day number five. Right? So when you come back, you still have to quarantine for at least five days, get your test. And if it's negative, then on day seven, you can opt out of your quarantine. Is that correct, David?
Yes.
You can test before you come in from travel also?
Yes.
Within 72 hours of returning.
Then 72 hours, correct.
Correct.
Or after, after three days.
There's a little bit of a, you know, you think about that, there's a little bit of a disparity in there and lots, lots of time to get COVID in that, that intervening period. Those are the staples.
Right.
Okay. Any additional questions for David on the COVID reporting methodology? Okay, David, thank you very much for, sorry, go ahead, David.
No, I was just, I think when you get more vaccine and the clinics are more regular, how will a resident choose the clinic at Town Hall? I glanced at the link on the website currently. It links you to the state system. So how will, how will a resident know that there's a clinic at Town Hall that they can utilize? Right. If you go to the 211 website now for testing, they, it brings up like, you you enter your zip code and it brings up all the testing facilities that are, that are anywhere near where your zip code is. That's in essence, the same way vaccines going to be made available. So you could choose where you go. And if you choose you want to be in Darien, then you click on that location and sign up for vaccine in that spot. But it's a portal that enables you to see where vaccine will be accessible so people can choose the location. You know, and time, because some, some facilities are going to be open more often than others. And but it's it's done by choice, but it's all by appointment. And that's our, that's, that's operational currently? Yes. Okay, perfect. Thank you. You're welcome.
It's just being, anybody who's not 75 and over is not allowed to sign up yet. The system will not allow you to sign up for the vaccine.
Interestingly, interestingly enough, I actually tested the system last week and signed up in Stanford and was allowed in as an essential worker. So the system is not kicking out. But part of the problem is right now, the system is in screening. So that's one of the reasons why the state is is really pushing hard to have people know that if you're not over 75, you shouldn't be signing up for vaccine right now.
One additional piece of information I want to share, I got a call this weekend from a representative from Stanford Health. And in partnership with the city of Stanford, they are going to be standing up a community vaccine clinic. They, David alluded to it earlier. Apparently, they've been promised to get a significant supply of vaccine. So we are in the catchment area for Stanford Hospital and Stanford Health. And we've requested to be part of their vaccine planning and hopefully we will be able to share information in the near term about how Darien residents, when the age groups open up, how our residents can have access to the Stanford Health clinics as well. Any other questions for David this morning? Okay, thank you very much, David. Appreciate your time.
Bye.
Okay, moving on to first selectments report. My report is very brief this morning. We're beginning to see bills being introduced in the legislative session. I have some final legislative agendas from CCM, Austin, WestCog, that I will distribute to all of you. You can take a look at what those agencies have as their priorities. I want to wish President-elect Biden the very best at the beginning of his administration. Wish him much success in helping to bring this country together and healing the divide. I'm certainly looking forward with optimism and hope that we can move beyond the very challenging events of the last few weeks and give him and his administration the best chance of success. And I want to extend congratulations and best wishes to Commissioner Miguel Cardo. And I want to extend, uh, congratulations and best wishes to Commissioner Miguel Cardona, who was our education commissioner, who's been tapped to join the Biden administration and his cabinet. I think that is a tremendous honor, uh, and I think that we should feel proud as Connecticut residents that, that, um, Commissioner Cardona had, will be in Washington. I know he's going to keep Connecticut, uh, top of mind and the best interests for, uh, for the residents, and if he's working in education, the students of the state of Connecticut. So with that, I will turn to Kate for Town Administrator's Report.
Good morning. Um, my budget will be presented to you next Monday, and in this COVID world, we are going completely virtual. There will be no budget book printed. I'm looking for faces. We will be giving you IDs so that you can access our budget software, OpenGov, online yourselves. We'll be, Jen and I are going to work on a training video for you later today, and will be available to have, um, some online meetings, sharing screens, so that you can see how to maneuver around. Um, but we're going to give you access to a small budget, sewer budget likely, so that you can play with it yourselves and get familiar with the software. And then during the budget workshops, we're going to utilize screen sharing to review the various department budgets. So, um, you know, I think it'll be pretty cool for you. We've talked in the past with you about how much detail departments provide. Um, you're going to have direct access to all that, and, um, so you can see the hard work that our department heads put into their budgets. Um, and that's it. That's all I have for today.
So I, I saw the, the board reaction to that. I had trepidation as well, but I want to share that we did all of our department head reviews that very same way, and it was terrific. Um, I, I think that you'll find that you actually have more information directly at your fingertips, uh, and so I'm looking forward to it, and, you know, certainly we can, we can shift if it gets uncomfortable and cumbersome, but, uh, OpenGov, it ha, it has tremendous power, um, that we've barely begun to scratch the surface of. So looking forward to us really giving this a try this budget season.
Yeah, I, I think one thing that, as you get familiar with working the software on your own, the bigger problem you're going to have during our workshops is wanting to move the screen yourself when it's either Jen or I controlling it. Um, I think you'll find it, um, really useful, and, um, you'll get to do, you know, answer a lot of your own questions by doing some exploring yourself.
When will we have access to this? To start exploring? We're starting on Monday. I'm concerned about the timing.
Okay. So we will give you the IDs probably tomorrow. We're not going to give you access to the general fund budget until Monday, or until after Monday. Um, but we will give you access to, I believe Jen's planning on the sewer budget. Um, one reason for not giving you access to the general fund budget right away is that, um, I'm making some significant proposals, and I need time to discuss them with department heads. Um, plus, you know, you don't want to take away my thunder from my presentation on Monday. Um, but yeah, expect to get IDs tomorrow and, um, hopefully a little video, and then, as I said, you know, Jen and I will be available to, um, walk you through things, answer questions.
Can we set up a time when we, when we all get together and have a little training?
Um.
Or do you plan to do that as a one-off?
I don't have a problem with doing that. Um, let me just, I'm just going to look at my calendar, because I have contract negotiations tomorrow afternoon. Um, but let me talk to Jen. Thursday's more free for me, uh, but let me talk to Jen and see what she has available. Um, she is more expert at maneuvering it than I. Um, I'll talk to her.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, no other questions on that topic? Oh, go ahead, Krista.
I'm sorry, to clarify, we will not see any budget numbers for the general fund until Monday?
Yep.
Um, I'm, I'm just concerned that it's going to be, for us to react and ask questions, it's just going to push it off a little bit, as long as we're willing to kind of work with that.
Well, understand your schedule first, so then we can look at it and absorb it and then kind of move forward. Well, you're not going to start discussing the budget until Tuesday, and the Tuesday, um, schedule-
Okay.
-is a lot of the smaller departments. Um, I'm just going to, I'm pulling it up on my screen here now. Um, your Tu- Tuesday schedule is mainly general government, um, which tend to be much smaller departments. Human Services, Senior Center, Youth Services, and Health are in there, but, um, I think, I, I really do think you'll be okay with the, with the way we've set it up.
The Monday is, Monday is intended to be our receipt-
Yes.
-of Kate's budget.
Um, okay, as long as we have time to learn how to manipulate it, absorb it. If you have that budget, or when you have that budget schedule, that would be helpful, just to get it-
You have a budget schedule.
No, I'm sorry. Who's presenting when?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, we see it when we did the budget count, when we did the calendars back in the fall. I can, um-
I think Linda sent it to you not long ago, again, also.
No, I'm sorry, which departments are presenting? I have it for Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. I'm sorry, I didn't have the-
Right. So you have that, we sent that out. Um, we don't actually, I think presenting is not the right word.
I'm looking at this.
That's it, yeah. Um, we don't require them to be there, except for the bigger departments. Um, they will not be presenting to you. It's me presenting to you, because at this point, it's my budget. So, you know, we might have people like Pam there for her budget to ask, to answer some of the more detailed questions, because hers is a pretty big budget. Um, but, you know, like, especially Monday night, you probably won't see most of those departments attending.
Okay. We'll give it, I mean, God knows, I have so many huge budget books still sitting around, so we'll save some trees.
We're going to give it a try, and like we said, you know, if it, if it becomes problematic or cumbersome for anyone, we can always print it out.
Yeah.
Not a problem. Okay, um, let's move on to board liaison reports. Uh, let's see, David, would you like to report for blight?
Sure. We, uh, we met last week. Uh, there are currently six cases that are listed as, uh, official blight. Uh, there are two cases that are on warning status and 11 cases on watch status. Uh, the board is moving forward with having the attorneys update the, uh, lean amount for our one, uh, chronic property. Uh, there are three additional properties that we are moving forward with serving an official, uh, notice that fines are going to begin to accrue, uh, due mostly to lack of, uh, response or lack of any material progress, uh, at those properties. So we're hoping that will stimulate some, uh, action, uh, there, and, uh, the board is going to serve notice, official notice of blight condition on two additional, uh, properties. On the good news side, uh, there's one property where, uh, the blight conditions have been substantially, uh, remediated, and, uh, we're removing that from the blight status. Uh, there's, uh, one property which has been significantly remediated, is likely to be removed at the next, uh, meeting, and, uh, there's one property where the owner has actually responded and has started to make improvements, so we are hopeful that that one will be, uh, rectified, uh, soon as well. And Kate, I'm sorry, I didn't send you the minutes, but I'll email this to you after this meeting.
Thank you, David. Sarah, arriving you.
We have our next meeting this Thursday morning, so I'll be able to give an update on our next one.
Thank you. Yep. Ox Ridge. You're on mute, Kip. Can't hear you, Kip.
All right. Sorry. Uh, we've got negotiations for the guaranteed maximum price. Um, it's being written out by all of the committee members that we're going to have a meeting, hopefully later this week, to both go over that, approve it, and, uh, talk about how we're organizing our meetings going forward. What I hear is we're now going from what all the designing phase and, and bidding, we're now moving into the construction phase, and what happens is the information moves to a different server. It goes over to ONG's server under Aconex system, and then all, and the way we business is going forward is we have two, I call them owner, architect, uh, contractor meetings a week, uh, a month, followed by a major meeting by the board, by the, a committee, where we approve the invoices for the month. Months will get an estimate, uh, from the contractors, uh, one number only, and we'll pay that rapidly as soon as we approve all of it. Um, right now, the, the building, um, the construction of the building, uh, the guaranteed maximum price is $50,820,000. This compares to a budget estimate, uh, back in August of $55,700,000. So we brought it down by over $5 million. The, um, in addition to the, the building, uh, itself, there are soft costs, the architect's cost, the cost of furniture fixtures, of bond council, et cetera, et cetera. Um, those numbers have yet to be refined, only because we don't have numbers on the furniture and fixtures, on the, on the, uh, technology equipment. We only have estimates. Uh, they were supposed to now get those things wrapped up fairly soon to give us some solid proposals. I can tell you that, um, the numbers that we look at right now are project cost, all in, before we have our soft cost redefined, we think we're going to bring some of those down, of $59 million. To be exact, $59,109,737. Of that amount, $3,974,000 are contingencies. That's between the contractor's contingency and the owner's contingency. So that's our buffer. So we brought our, uh, costs so far by $3,190,000 compared to our $63 million estimate, which we, right, sticking our finger in the air back two years ago, or we brought it down $5,320,000 from what our numbers looked like in August. Um, I'll have more to report once we've got our meeting underway, um, and we've established how we're going to be running ourselves going forward. That's the report.
That's great. Thanks so much, Kip. It's really good news. A big project moving forward smoothly is not easy to achieve. And Krista, do you have anything to report to us? Anything new to report?
No, Kate and I are still looking to touch base to get a little bit more information regarding gifts, which I'm going to be working on, and the grants, um, and then there has been no communication from the Pier Tree Point Building Committee.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to new business. Discuss and take action on a request to accept donations for pickleball courts. And I know we have a number of people on the call this morning. I see, uh, Director Pam Geary, and I believe we have Sean Shea on the line this morning, and some, uh, folks from the RTM, so, um, welcome.
Thank you. Um, I just want to, if you don't know, pickleball, pickleball has become a really big deal in surrounding communities, including ours. And, uh, it, starting in 2020, um, when the pandemic hit, we opted to take the single tennis court at Cherry Lawn Park and remove the tennis net and put out two portable pickleball court, pickleball nets, so that we, and we left it that way the entire pandemic, due to the fact that people were wanting to get outside, outside, stay safe, they couldn't play inside. And so currently, even before the pandemic, our pickleball program, um, and Beth can attest to this as well, at the senior center, in our gym at Mathers Center, has just exploded. And so we had Sean Shea, who is also, is a town resident and is also a avid pickleball player, come to the Parks and Rec Commission a couple of years back, um, looking to get nets, portable nets, which we did provide, and that started off that phase. And then he came back this fall, uh, with a proposal, because the net, the nets were so popular at that single tennis court, uh, to, um, spearhead a fundraiser, fundraising effort to provide, uh, permanent pickleball courts, which would, four courts would be able to fit on this one tennis court. So the Parks and Rec Commission, um, loved the proposal and approved it, and I am going to be working with Sean, but as you know, I have to get approvals for this gift, and working with Kate, um, letting her know that we had three quotes, uh, one ranging the lowest at 10,500 to do the resurfacing, all the way up to 29,000, which that particular company is typically very high. So with, um, a request, um, to have you approve donations up to $20,000, we feel that we can get this project completed.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Pam. I, I think my questions really, I, I certainly don't at all debate the, the growing demand for pickleball. It's a super fun sport, and I love that people have been able to be outside playing it. Um, but taking away a town tennis court, can you talk to me about the impacts of doing that? Um, you know, will there be tennis players who will be displaced from no longer having access to that court?
Well, I can tell you firsthand, we haven't had any complaints. Um, even when we, uh, put the two portable nets out there for the entire year, um, and took away the one tennis net, I didn't have any, any complaints whatsoever. And we've also had this subject on our Parks and Recreation Commission agenda, and nobody has written in with any complaints. Uh, we do have three tennis courts, we have four, take away the one, we're still left with three full tennis courts at the park, and, um, there's plenty of places to play, and even with my observations over the year, 2020 year, um, I never saw anybody waiting to play tennis. Uh, the courts were very active, of course, um, especially at Weed Beach, we have the six courts there. Um, so I, I don't, if there were people upset about it, I think we would have heard.
Um, will that be part of your Parks and Rec Commission process to try and ascertain the public sentiment? Obviously, you've heard from the, the pickleball advocates, uh, just want to make sure there's an appropriate public information process on making that change.
Uh, we haven't had a public information session strictly on that, but we have had it on our commission agenda about converting the court into pickleball courts, but I certainly can have, have that arranged during this process.
Four questions. Krista?
Um, just on the, a couple of things, lots of questions, but one on your memo to us, I just want to clarify, I believe you voted on your November meeting on the pickleball, because I watched that last night, so just for anyone looking, it was the November, not the December meeting. Um, two, as far as public information, we did hear from one constituent, but, uh, it turns out the article in the patch was incorrect. It stated that the courts were going to be converted, so there is a social media out there with incorrect information. I tried to put one, correct it online, but, uh, the patch is reporting it incorrectly. Um, I know the commission has voted to convert this, um, but I suppose I would support hearing a little bit more public outreach regarding this decision. I have personally waited for courts at Weed Beach, I mean, sorry, at Cherry Lawn, um, but I'm only one person. But overall, I absolutely support pickleball in Darien, so we'll leave it at, at that. Um, I, I wanted to take the conversation, a couple, one other question, what happens if you don't raise enough money? So where does that leave this process? And what's the deadline? And can you talk a little bit more about that?
Sure. So as I, you know, told Sean, Sean really wanted to see this project get off in the, you know, in the springtime, but it, there's a lot of moving parts, there's a lot of boards that we have to have approvals from. Um, we, we have to have a scope of services- We have to have a scope of services in terms of the job, put in a bid. We have to go out to bid for this. And in the meantime, Sean has generously said that he would, you know, run this, spearhead this fundraising campaign. So Sean, maybe you want to speak a little bit to that?
Well, I'm sorry, I'm less concerned about, I'm sure, I very much appreciate Sean's efforts, but if Sean comes up with more money or less money, where does that leave the project?
Well, first of all, there's two parts to this project. The one is the court itself, to make it into four courts. Which, by the way, Jamie will take care of sixteen people that can play instead of four. And there's a million other courts around for other people to play. So if anybody says that we're taking away one tennis court, you know, for, for people that are going to be that selfish that are tennis players, they can play on all the other courts. But most people that are playing pickleball are former tennis players because of their knees, and that's why it's so popular, blah, blah, blah. But if we raise enough money, one, one, there's two parts to that. The court itself will be four courts with new nets, permanent nets, and rearrange the fences that are there. And then on the left side of the, well, the west side of the court, there's two old steps that were there, left from something else. They're kind of hazardous. So we're, that's kind of another phase of what we're going to do. Or it's kind of, it's both in the same thing. But if we don't raise enough money for that, then, I guess I should say, if it's twenty thousand dollars roughly for the pickleball courts, and say it's fifteen thousand dollars to do the resurfacing or the, or taking away the old steps and making like a little sitting area, sloping back the hill and putting three benches in there, that would be kind of another phase. I'm still worried about that part with, if the Park and Rec's maintenance or somebody else might take those steps away. But anyway, I think there's so much outpouring on this thing that we'll raise enough money, I'm pretty confident. We've got three thousand dollars already. The other thing is, is that the town, by the way, makes a ton of money on this by giving lessons. So if the town wants to kick in, let them. If we don't raise enough money, we'll come back to you and say, okay, maybe you guys want to kick in the rest. If we have too much money, then we'll come back to you and say, let's put sixteen courts. That would be a good problem to have, raising too much. Not enough, we'll have to come back to you.
I'm sorry, let, actually, let me take a step back. Because it's come up, come up with the schools too, with the Board of Ed. Are we accepting money or are we accepting a product?
I think there, people are donating, just like they did to the basketball courts that's over there. Some people raised some money, donated to have that rebuilt essentially. And so that's what you're doing here. And I guess, Pam, you can clarify this, that the Board of Finance, the money has to go to them somehow and then allocate it to after the bids are awarded. Is that how it would work?
That's how we did it with the basketball court. We received the checks, it was put into an account, and we drew it when we had the expenses come up. So, and I also will add that, just for your knowledge, the programs that we ran for pickleball in the spring, we produced revenue of eighty-three hundred dollars in the spring and summer season and another eighty-six hundred in the fall, just through pickleball programs. So there's sixteen grand right there.
Do you run lessons in tennis?
We do, lots.
So I have a process question. I've seen some numbers on projected project costs. But Pam, you said the project has to be bid, right? And is it going to be bid with those two separate components? The work to the court itself and then the landscaping work as a, as a separate bid? Or bid as one complete package?
Well, we haven't started writing up the bid yet. I am now going to have a serious conversation with our crew about what the ability is to take out those stairs, which I, I believe we can take out those stairs pretty easily. And I've talked to Jeremy about like kind of creating a slope of the landscape, and he's approved that, that it's not that great of a difference where they would have to get involved. I think with our machinery, we can do very much like what we did with the basketball court with no, no additional funds needed. Because really, all we're talking about is taking away those, the steps are very, they're, they're leftover from a building that used to be there many years ago. And it's, it's just a steep slope, those stairs are, it's, they're odd. You know, I don't think they get used very often, but it's kind of a very, it's steep to get down to the court. So it would be a huge improvement to take those away and make a gentle slope to the courts.
Sure, that sounds like it makes good sense and maybe something that you would do anyway, independent of this project.
I agree.
To follow on my process question, isn't it, wouldn't it be more prudent to bid this project and then say, we need X number of dollars and we would like to entertain accepting a gift of, you know, up to twenty thousand dollars for the project? What I'm worried about is that we approve a gift of up to twenty thousand dollars, the project gets bid, you talk to your staff, and, and there's things they can't do. And then all of a sudden, the project costs are twenty thousand plus X. And, and now we've committed to a project that we haven't actually committed to an appropriation for those additional funds. So, you know, Kate, maybe you can help us here understand what is the best process here? I'm not opposed to this project in any way, but I want to make sure we get the process right.
Can I add to that, Jamie? Because that's where my, at what point, Sean, and I appreciate your outreach, and that's fantastic. But where is the cutoff? Sean raises twelve thousand, we've gone out to bid, now you've got a gap. Or, you know, whether it runs over or the fundraising comes short, that's where my concern is.
Most towns come up with the money themselves. The only reason why every town around is putting in pickleball courts and way better than anything that, that we had plans for. But the only reason why we went to this method was because, with all due respect, to get anything done and to raise money from, to get money from you guys would take five more years. So we thought the best way to get this court done sooner rather than later was to raise the money ourselves. But going back to the two-step process, whatever Pam's people want to do on that side or can do by taking out the steps, the, the people that do these courts, they kind of concentrate on the courts. The people that do the landscaping part is another kind of company. That's why I wanted to keep it in two, two sections and maybe two bids. But we could raise enough money for, I'm confident we could raise enough money for both. But we won't know how much we need until we decide how much the town wants to do on the steps, et cetera.
Well, Sean, I just want to, I just want to step in here for one second. And I hear you, and I, I don't dispute that pickleball is exploding here in southwestern Connecticut, and cities and towns are stepping up to build those kinds of courts. You probably already know that it's really a matter of the Parks and Rec Commission and what they are prioritizing as their capital projects. The town of Darien certainly could and would likely support pickleball court conversion in the context of a Parks and Recreation Commission budget proposal. But to the best of my knowledge, it's not coming in a budget proposal. So, you know, I, I, I just want to say that we're, we're not a stumbling block to the town spending money on things like this. It just has to be prioritized by the commission in order to be supported by the Board of Selectmen, then the Board of Finance, and potentially even the RTM, if it's in the context of an annual budget process. So this is separate from the budget process. This is a different project altogether. And so we're, we're just diving into the details. Yes, Pam?
So I just wanted to add that when it comes to the fundraising money, I've put together, what we would like to do is get the bid out there so that when the people come out to bid on it, we'll get a better understanding of whether it's going to be ten thousand five hundred or fifteen or twenty. So that, you know, at that point, that will be the driver. And we'll know whether Sean can obtain that or not. And it looks like, I mean, I did hand in a draft, well, that was a concession, wasn't it? No, yes. So we still have to get that going. But that would be the idea.
From a process perspective, are, are we, are we ready to entertain support for a gift of up to twenty thousand dollars? Is there, there's likely no harm in doing that at this point, correct?
I think there's no harm in doing it. The risk you run is putting it out to bid and having the bids come in in excess of twenty thousand dollars and needing to come back through the process to approve more donations, to approve an additional appropriation. I'm thinking back to some of the bigger projects, I mean, huge projects we did with the, the Board of Ed, where they raised funds to turf the, the fields. And having to go back and ask for additional appropriations, additional gift acceptances multiple times. I'd be a little bit more comfortable if the request was to accept donations up to a higher amount, that you wouldn't have to come back. That doesn't mean going through the process that the Board of Finance is going to be willing to approve an appropriation. I don't think they should approve an appropriation without the funding in place. Yeah, because then you run the risk of, if we don't raise enough money, we've approved an appropriation for, say, twenty-five thousand dollars, and we don't raise that much. But that appropriation exists.
So I think what I'd like to propose today is to potentially take a vote of the Board of Selectmen, if that's what's required, on the concept of supporting the conversion of the tennis court at Cherry Lawn Park to pickleball courts and the concept of our willingness to receive community donations to pay for or help defray that cost. But to come back later, after the bids have been received, we know what the cost is going to be. We know what Sean is comfortable raising in terms of community donations to take a formal vote on the donation. Would that be an acceptable process?
How about this? I was told we couldn't go out to bid until we get your approval, Board of Finance's approval, and RTM's approval. I'm willing to get it out to bid now. Jeremy wanted me to come up with a plan, so I hired a landscape architect, my own money, to come up with a drawing. And that way, it can go out to bid right away. Doesn't mean you have to, then you'll know exactly how much we need. I won't have to wait to get through all this process to get, to get the bids. I don't see what the point, what the problem would be, like getting it out to bid. We can come back to you and say, look, this is exactly what it's going to cost. These are the bids. This is how much we're going to need. And I'd like to start raising money now. I was told we can't raise money until all this is approved either. So it's kind of like back the circles and circles just to get something that, to me, is a no-brainer.
Yep.
Making money off of it, it's, it's, everybody wants it. I'm willing to do, to see this thing through. It took me, it took me three years just to get the, the, just to get the first court approved, just to get the pickleball lines, and then I had to buy a net. I don't want to take this another three years. That's why I'm doing this now. So whatever you could do to expedite this process, because I know we're all busy, this would be great. Vote on it however you want to see it.
Yeah, we appreciate, we appreciate that, Sean. And, you know, we're not looking to be a stumbling block to a very generous donation. But we're a government entity and we have a process that we, we have to go through. So Kate, I need some guidance here on, on what we're, what we should be doing here.
Honestly, I'd like to see it go out to bid and have the bid specs include language that this project will only go forward if sufficient appropriation, you know, if an appropriation is approved, that we have the ability to back out. But, you know, I'm a little concerned about the wide variety of cost potential. So I think it'd be better for us to narrow it down a little bit. It doesn't mean that fundraising can't start to take place and, you know, get commitments from people who might donate, just don't actually get the checks until we're ready for them.
Krista?
I'm sorry, I don't want to take it too far. I think the process is very important. We have to be very clear on this. And again, thank you, Sean. And I'm just sort of getting up to speed with this. I didn't realize this was a three-year endeavor for you. Two things. One, I want to make sure, because you referenced on a moment ago, other communities. I know Fairfield converted, that came up in your meeting in November. I don't want to do this and not do it right, though. At the same time, I think, Sean, you have a, you're looking for speed, which is a factor. But is this the court you would envision for Darien? You seem to know more about pickleball than anyone, or Pam, if you want to chime in. I just don't want to go down this path and find out we get an old, you know, mediocre pickleball court. So can we just talk briefly about that?
I, I agree. I'm a builder in town, you know, and I kind of like to put, you know, drive by and say, okay, I did that. And I'm going to drive by this and play there, play there too. So I, I'm, I'm looking to have it not turn into quality, but I think that what's going to happen is, once we get this done, it's a little bit short. Is it two feet short? It could be longer, yes. But other towns have done this and it's worked out fine, and I've went there. Towns like Brennich really went over the top and did, did it right. Places, even Milford and other places around the state have done it top-notch. So what will happen, as I envision, is that it's going to be so popular that you're going to want to do permanent courts somewhere else. There's so much room at Cherry Lawn, Weed Beach, other places, there's plenty of places to do it. So let's get this through. I'll, I'll, I'll make it nice and beautiful that the town will be proud of. And later on, you can do the better ones.
Okay, so is that something, Pam? Can you opine that this is going to be sort of good enough? Maybe it's not regulation, if it's a little short from what you're saying, Sean, but...
What I'd like to add is that I, I did get in touch with a colleague, the director of Fairfield Parks and Recreation. And Kate, I believe I sent you a picture of that. If I didn't, I can forward, re-forward it. But he sent me a photo of one single tennis court that they did convert to four, and it is beautiful. I'm pretty darn shocked because I couldn't wrap my head around four on one tennis court. And they did a beautiful job. And they did the same thing. They did some in-house work with their Department of Public Works and contracted out the other part, so.
Okay, so suffice to say, everybody's in agreement that this will be, we're not doing this because of time or we're not limiting our budget because we're just trying to get something in. This is a product that we'll all be proud of.
Oh, absolutely. But I do, you know, we did, we were ready to put money in our capital budget for pickleball courts and post-tension, just like our tennis courts at Weed Beach. But, you know, the ticket price was very, very expensive. And that's when Sean stepped up to say, you know, I've gotten some quotes, they're under twenty thousand, and I think we can do this as a resurfacing rather than a reconstruction.
Okay, that's my second question, because that came up in your meeting in November. I'm sorry, I don't mean to get this off, too far off base. But is it the right move to be just, again, it's time and money, but should you be looking at the post-tension for this court? Because personally, I would support getting these courts in shape. I know... I know it was, the quote was made on your November meeting that this was the least friction solution. I appreciate least friction, but I also want to do it right.
Well, I think we, we were dealing with the same sort of conversation when it came to the basketball space. Quite honestly, we wanted to build a full-size basketball court in a different location according to our master park plan. But then it came back around saying, well, the space is there, we can do it for X amount of money. We had people that wanted to donate. And I have to say, the court came out beautiful. So we did save the town a lot of money. It is not a post-tension court. There are going to be some costs to keep that court up because asphalt does not last as long as post-tension. But, you know, you're going, you're, you're looking at $100,000. You know, 60 to 100 for post-tension. And so here, you know, we can, that court's done very well, I have to say, too. In my five and a half years here, we have put literally no money into that tennis court. It's, it's actually in a very good spot, other than it has a lot of shade because of the trees there. So there does get some, some, I don't know, berries and branches and things like that that. But other than that, it's, it hasn't had to be, you know, patched. So is it actually a good time to resurface it at this point?
Okay. So it is not your recommendation, because I know Jim also brought this up in November, that you wouldn't want to move forward with a post-tension? If you had all the money in the world, you wouldn't move forward right now with post-tension on that court?
Well, I think post-tension is the better way to go, any of the courts. I mean, it's, concrete is showing that it lasts longer. It's more expensive, but it lasts longer. We did not do that with the basketball court, I guess is my point. You know, we, we took advantage of the fact that there were people that were generous enough that wanted to see the space get used and not wait for whether or not the town would decide to, to give us $100,000 for a post-tension court.
So I, I, Krista, I, I hear the, what you're, the road you're going down, Krista, but I would say this. So much of this is in the purview of the Parks and Rec Commission, right? They've discussed this, if post-tension pickleball courts was something they wanted to pursue, I think they would have, they would have put it in the capital budget. It seems they want to, they prefer a donation route. I think it's incredible that the community is willing, Sean's willing to step up and, undertake this effort. I would just, in the, in the interest of moving this meeting along, I would like to recommend that we, that Pam and Sean work very closely with Kate and Jen on the next steps of the process. Because I also am concerned about Sean hiring a landscape architect, because that would be a gift too. So I think there needs to be some discussions with Kate and Finance Department about how to do this right so we can get to a place where it can be bid sooner rather than later, get a real price, see if Sean can, can raise that money or how much of that he can raise, and then come back to us with a full plan for the project, the donation, if there's an additional appropriation required of any kind, what the costs of maintenance will be ongoing. So sort of soup to nuts in terms of what you're asking the Board of Selectmen and then ultimately the other town bodies to approve. And hopefully that can all be done in very short order. We're not looking to put up a roadblock, but this process matters. So I haven't heard from Sarah or David or Kip, but I would just like to hear your concurrence, if nothing else, on what I've recommended.
I'll go first. I would agree. Krista's questions are right on. I've been watching the Parks and Rec Committee meetings. Sean, I love your enthusiasm and your willingness to get involved. My concern is that this project, let's say it costs 40,000, and now you somehow personally have to come up with 25,000 to finish it, and that's not something we can do easily. That requires town approval and RTM approval. And I understand that the process seems frustrating, but we do have to do this with a town property. I love the idea that the community is willing to get behind it. And it is my understanding that there is a huge demand for the pickleball courts at Cherry Lawn, so I absolutely support that. The feedback I heard from residents at the Parks and Rec Commission meetings were phenomenal. People are really behind it. And I think it's a fantastic idea. But we do need to figure out, I guess, what the costs and then also the maintenance over the years are.
Thanks, Sarah. David or Kip, anything additional you want to add? Okay. Go ahead.
Let's get it.
Sorry, Kip, I'm sorry. Do you have a comment?
Let's get it done. I feel like I'm in the Department of Transportation.
So when you say get it done, are, do you want us to approve the up to $20,000 donation today or do you want to get a real price before we do that?
I'll get the real price. Let's just move forward. Let's, let's move the process forward.
Okay, great. So what I'm hearing, and Sean, please have the takeaway be that we are very supportive of this project and we want to help, you know, get it underway as soon as possible. And Pam and Sean can work with Kate and Jen to, to button up the procedural details. Sound good?
So it's okay to go out and get it bid?
If you, if you could, after the Board of Selectmen meeting is over, I'm going to recommend that you arrange a phone call with Kate and Jen and Pam to talk through those details, okay?
Right. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. And thank you for joining us this morning.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pam. Okay. Moving on, and I don't know how much time we're going to have. I, in theory, had an 11 o'clock meeting, but it's now 10:47 and this is a big topic to discuss next. So it's item number three, to discuss potential uses of the Edgerton property. Really, my intention with putting that on the agenda this morning is to restart the discussions. This Board of Selectmen and, and boards before it have, have begun to discuss what to do with the Edgerton property where the former senior center was. We've not really done anything with that property. We took the building down, but we haven't recreated. So I just want to begin the discussions on what we should do with this wonderful piece of open space in good proximity to Nuroton Heights. And I really just want to kick off the discussion. And important in this process immediately is to engage the neighbors of this parcel. They do have important and strong opinions about what, what they would like to see and what they expressly would not like to see here. So I don't have any specific proposals for you today, other than I have asked Ed Gentile to price out a topographical survey of the parcel and to give me a rough estimate on what it would cost to grade, to at least have a usable, open space parcel as a first step here. And, and that could be the only step we want to achieve at this point in time. But I will open it up for discussion with the board. And I think, I think we need to begin to make some important decisions about this piece of land.
Could I just ask for my indication? Is the playing field that's adjacent to that part of the aggregate parcel the way it's currently deeded?
No. That's a school-maintained property.
Okay. Great. Thanks.
Yeah. Krista?
I know when the property was first kind of came into play, the town contacted the school system, which indicated at that point they had no need for that space. I just want to make sure if, or just to ask, has anyone gone back to the school district? Because in this time, you know, the Fitch Academy is looking for a home next year. Their lease is running out. There's talk about a Fitch Middle School. I just thought that might be an opportunity for that type of structure.
So Krista, we have twice now asked the Board of Education about their desires for that property, but we haven't done anything with it. And part of my thought process is it's land that the town should keep in our quote-unquote "land bank" so that future administrations, future Boards of Education, should they need that parcel of land for some reason, which they've indicated they don't thus far, there's no harm in going back to the Board of Education. I have heard no discussion about it in any long-term facilities planning, but we may decide as a board that it would be important to not really construct something with great permanence there with the thought that we want to be mindful of the future needs of the town. So that should be part of this discussion.
Okay. Fair enough.
Couple of questions. I think part of the concern is that because there is nothing there, if there was to be a use by the Board of Ed or the town, it would be a significant expense in the millions. And, you know, given the fact that we have this very large building project going on at the schools at Oxford, it would be very difficult to take on another significant building project. But I would be very curious as to what the zoning restrictions on that property are and what agreements have been put into place with the neighbors previously. I know there are several agreements that have been put into place as far as traffic and, and so forth. I mean, when we went through this whole process with the town pool several years ago, that came up as a potential property, but I don't know what agreements have been made as far as, you know, hour usage or traffic or, or lights or, I just have no idea. So it would be very interesting to have the survey done to understand these zoning restrictions on that property and the agreements that have been put into place.
We can have Jeremy come back in a future meeting and run through all of that with us. You know, the one thing I do know is that there was an arrangement made that the buses will continue to utilize the, you know, that roadway, Edgerton, to access the Middlesex Middle School. Because there had been discussions during the pandemic about whether we could reroute parent traffic. And the answer to that from the zoning department was no, that that's bus traffic. And the neighbors had an agreement with the town that there would not be parent traffic up to the middle school through the Edgerton property. Clearly, it was used as a community use. It had been a school and then it became a senior center for community use. So I, I just appreciate that we can begin these discussions. We'll get color from Jeremy. Ed will go forward with getting a survey. So we'll know exactly what we're talking about, how much land, what, what restrictions are on it and what, what aren't. And then we'll, we'll look at the community needs that we have right now, whether it's a need for some open green space where people can just throw a frisbee, a dog park, you know, a whole host of other things. So with your permission, I would like to be, to begin that process. Is everyone in concurrence that, that we can begin to move forward on the information gathering, fact-finding?
Absolutely.
I see Kip nodding. I see David's great. Okay. Perfect. All right. Then we, we will move forward cautiously and we will engage the neighbors immediately, let them know that we're beginning those discussions. Okay, we have a transfer today. Discuss and take action on a request for transfer of $8,905 for repairs to the beach sifter. I think the transfer request is self-explanatory. Remember, Lomi Boppes. A wonderful addition to our, I mean, I can't believe it's 10 years old. Does anyone have any questions for, for us about this necessary repair? No? I'll entertain a motion to approve the transfer of $8,905 from Parks and Rec Facility Repair to Equipment Maintenance. Sarah moves. Kip seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Great. Thank you. Kate, is there any public comment for today? Oh, sorry. Never mind. Back to minutes. Review, meeting minutes of December 23rd, special meeting. Any corrections or additions? No? Okay. Motion to approve as presented. Sarah moves. You have a second?
Second.
Kip seconds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. And our regular meeting minutes of January 4th. Any corrections? No? Okay. Entertain a motion to approve. Sarah moves. You have a second?
Second.
Kip seconds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. And our regular meeting minutes of January 4th. Any corrections? No? Okay. Entertain a motion to approve. Sarah moves. You have a second? Kip seconds. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Great. Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Kate, is there any public comment for today?
No.
No public comment. Okay. Great. Agenda review. Beyond the things that came up in this meeting today that we will be following up on. Pickleball, Edgerton.
I think we're going to be tied up in a lot of budget discussions, so...
Yep. Okay. Great. Then with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Sarah moves. You have a second? Krista seconds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Great. Thank you all very much. A long but very good meeting. Have a wonderful day.